And welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting this May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. We're going to start off with a moment of reflection. Mr. Berkowitz, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to have introductions of new employees. Is there any new employees to the county? I see all kinds of hands going up.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
I just wanted to introduce you today to Maria Fuentes. Maria is the HR technician up there in your Human Resources Risk Management Department.
Welcome. Would you like to say a couple words? That's okay. Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Stephen Bates. He is our replacement office technician. He has a great wealth of experience in dealing with the community, our customers, people that we would engage with, and also he's a veteran. So, he's going to be a great fit for the office. He just started here last week. So, we are really happy to have him part of our office.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. Welcome. Would you like to say a couple words? Great. Thank you. Welcome. Anybody else? Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. How are you?
Great. How are you?
I'm good. I would like to reintroduce you to Deputy Jaren Gill. He recently was promoted to Sergeant. That's pretty exciting in our small department when we have promotions like that. We did have another new hire and another promotion. They couldn't be here today, so my hope is to bring them later. I'll talk about Jaren briefly. He started with the Sheriff's Office in two thousand and ten. Prior to that, he was a reserve officer with Crescent City Police Department. I remember him there at the time. He grew up in Sonora, California, until he moved here in sixth grade, graduated Delnor High in the class of two thousand and six, and graduated Eureka CR Police Academy in two thousand and eight. With our department, he's been assigned to patrol, the SWAT team investigations, and he is also our primary advisor for the Explorer Program, which we're very proud of. He coordinates the annual Redwood Coast Explorer Leadership Academy every year. It says he sought his promotion to Sergeant because it has been his long-term goal to supervise a patrol shift and help guide deputies to provide the best service possible to our communities.
Thank you.
That's Sergeant Gill, and he will entertain any questions that you may have.
Would you like to say a few words?
I decided for my new role at the county.
Great. Well, congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? At this time, is there any reportable actions from closed session?
Yes, with a motion by Supervisor Gitlin, second by Supervisor Howard, and a five-zero vote, the Board voted to defend Cumbro versus County of Delnor at CVUJ nineteen-ten-seventy-seven.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda. In order to add an item to the agenda, the item must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter must require action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Do I have anything from you gentlemen at the Board? Okay. Then, we're going to move on to Board reports. You want to kick us off, Supervisor Berkowitz?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Last week Supervisor Howard and I met with Assembly Member Jim Fraser, the Chairman of the Assembly Transportation Committee, along with Jennifer Barton, his Chief of Staff, and Jamie Mottoli, the Project Manager for Caltrans. This meeting was hosted by Assemblyman Wood, and we discussed the progress of the geotechnical studies of the bypass at last chance grade. We also discussed the November meeting of the California Transportation Commission, where they will get a chance to see for themselves what last chance grade really looks like. Of note, all of those who attended the meeting agreed that the twenty thirty nine timeline for completion of the bypass is totally unrealistic, and the timeline will be moved up. I had a meeting with VFW Commander Jerry Johnson and David Cooper, where we discussed the proposed ideas to get veterans off the street and provide housing for them. They would like to see the existing structures located at the old Juvenile Hall to provide limited onsite services for veterans. They may be bringing this idea before our Board to vet this idea for feasibility. All of our board members attended the CSAC Legislative Conference held in Sacramento. While in Sacramento, our Board of Supervisors had the opportunity to listen to Governor Newsom outline some of the challenges facing our state and his plan to deal with them. I was pleased to hear him say that one-size solutions do not fit all, and he seems to be genuinely concerned about the homeless problem that affects every county. And best of all, he announced and outlined several measures that the state is being proactive with solutions. The last line of his presentation was, "The best is yet to come." I sincerely hope so. And that's my report, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Howard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Supervisor Berkowitz mentioned, CSAC a couple weeks ago, they always put on a good show, specific to the Ledge Conference, but we decided to take this opportunity also to do quite a bit of lobbying across the street at the State Capitol, in particular with Assemblyman Wood's AB two oh four bill, which is the Community Benefits Bill. Supervisor Cowan, myself, and Adam Goldstein actually participated in quite a bit of this lobbying activity, where we visited Senator Pan's Senate Committee for Health on this issue, Vince Marchad, also Senator Rubio's staff member on this issue, Alex Hirsch, Jessica Golly, who was Senator Levas' staff member, Chris Wackowski, Senator Stone's staff member, all on this issue of AB two oh four. As you're aware, this is an issue pertinent to transparency for nonprofit hospitals. In particular, our not-for-profit hospital here in our community, Sutter Coast, has community benefit through their not-for-profit status. Knowing where those funds come into our community or get returned to our community is critically important to see how they're being spent. The legislation will help to shed some light on some of the more transparent issues that this community has witnessed here in the last decade-plus under management through Sutter Health. We also took the opportunity, Supervisor Hemmingson and I, to visit with Stafford Lair, Department of Fish and Wildlife, on issues that we are currently seeing getting extraordinarily exciting with elk within our county, and talk about some recent happenings that you'll hear more discussion on later with the initial Statement of Reason and the draft Environmental Impact Statement. We also took the opportunity Supervisor Cowan and I, and Supervisor Hemmingson, to visit with Paul Snyder, with Federal Highways Administration. Met with the Community Development Department on the proposed wilderness regulations coming down through Congressman Huffman's office, and then also took some time to meet with the California Coastal Conservancy and Allen Winogravo on some projects, particularly District Three, and hoping that we could get some coastal conservancy dollars up towards our camp park to make it a better-use area because it's one of these parks that is very, very utilized in our park system for the county. We want to see it expanded. If possible, to let more people enjoy and recreate here on the coast. Also, took some time to discuss issues at Pac Shores and also facility improvements with county staff, and then also met with the Delnor Local Transportation Commission, where in particulars, an item on our agenda today through Senate Bill one fifty-two, which is basically a reallocation of funds for active transportation programs within the state that would allocate a lot more of those funds down to large municipalities and their MPOs. We'll have a lot more discussion on that today, but it's basically robbing the piggy bank of the rest of our rural communities, and we want to make sure that we're actively participating in letting the state know our concerns with that reallocation of funds if that bill were to go through. Tended a Natural Resources Goals Committee meeting where we discussed elk, we discussed wilderness, we discussed camp park, we discussed SISCU RAC funding, about thirty-three thousand dollars in authorized community development to pursue some of those funds through the SISCU RAC, and then also Point St. George discussion of a trails meeting that I know CAO Serena participated in, and Allen Winogroto. Had a couple calls from constituents specific to subdivision issues off of Ocean View Drive and Highway one oh one, and as Supervisor Berkowitz mentioned, the discussion for last chance grade with Jim Fraser, Assemblyman. One thing to note of importance, Jim is a big advocate for our county. He's the Chair of the Assembly Transportation Committee. Things start in his committee and stop in his committee if it's a big issue. So, having his full support on ensuring that our projects are first and foremost in his committee that go on to Senate appropriations is extremely important. And based on both what Supervisor Berkowitz and I heard, I think some of them in Fraser is extremely important to this COG and also extremely supportive of what we want to do with last chance grade, and he has made a promise to be here with us on November sixth, when the Transportation Commission is here, visiting our county and looking specifically at last chance grade issues. Want to congratulate my son and the media champions, and also Supervisor Cowan's son, for participating in events last week in Santa Rosa. Bryce is moving on because he took third in the pole vault championship. He's moving on next week to the North Coast sections to compete for hopefully some high honors. Happy Mother's Day to all you mothers out there. But, most importantly, I want to end with a great event that happened this weekend with the Humane Society. A lot of great acts, a great time had by all that came out there to support spay and neuter programs for our Humane Society in our backyard. There were some, in particular, there's some great, great shows. You know, both Supervisor Hemmingson and I, we saw this little silhuette of a man who just thought he was a poor boy, but, you know, things are easy come and easy go in his vocabulary these days, but he thought it really didn't matter to be up there acting on stage, but in the end, he won that great award from the judges as the best act of the night. Congratulations to our own Freddie Mercury, Andrew Goodwin, for getting up there and putting on a great show for the community and painting on those white spandex pants. Very nicely done. And that's the end of my report, Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Well, directly after our last meeting, you've already heard, we all headed down to Sacramento to attend the county's Legislative Conference. This is an opportunity we have to listen to different symposia on what is relevant to our community and what is important. And there was one particular one which I took note of called the Silver Tsunami, which we obviously have a growing senior population, and it affects our future and the state's. And naturally, the panel was staffed with no shortage of expert county and state government folks. It's predicted that seniors will suffer an increase in mental illness, homelessness, and other impacts. Many of us just automatically kind of dismiss and say, "Well, that's just no big deal." That is a big deal. So, after the question-and-answer period ended, actually began, I asked the question to those on the panel. I suggested that if everyone in the room adopted a senior and commit once a month to take that senior to the market, or a doctor appointment, or somewhere in need, many of the seniors have given up their cars, think how we would address the problem without a government involvement. So, there was some silence in the room, and they thought that was a pretty good idea, but I would hope that that would resonate throughout. And, yes, I do support a senior once a month, and we go to the market, and we go to the doctor, and what have you, and it's appreciated, and it frees him up so that he doesn't have to worry about how he's going to get from here to there. So, something for all of us to think about. Also, at the conference, I participated in recognizing CDCR, that's our Corrections Department of Rehabilitation, Secretary Ralph Diaz, who had the word "acting" removed from his title. He's now the official secretary. So, on the second day of the conference, Lassen County Supervisor Chris Gallagher and I met with Secretary Diaz to discuss expanding the off-reservation program across the thirty-five institutions, which covers, at last count, about fifteen counties. Secretary Diaz agreed to meet on an annual basis with representatives from each of those fifteen counties which a CDCR institution is situated. And we'll report back to you as we move forward. So, these individuals who are coming out of our institutions on parole, break a sweat, come on out and help clean up our community. They're doing it now on the freeway median and other projects, and this expanding effort will do a great deal to abate the blighted conditions that pervades across not just our county, but across the fifty-seven other counties. Well, on a personal note, I traveled down to Irwindale Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, to acknowledge a family friend's seventeenth anniversary. Deputy Sheriff David March, who was murdered by a three-times deported illegal alien, and this was the seventeenth anniversary of the memorial which took place in Irwindale, had an opportunity to meet with Fifth District Supervisor Los Angeles, Catherine Barger, who was also on scene with many Angel families. And this is an issue that I feel very passionate about, that I feel these are the flaws effectuated by sanctuary state issue and what it's going to cause, maybe not yet, but in the future here in our county, and has already reared its face in counties that are rural, and for instance, in this past weekend in Yuba City, where an individual was manslaughter conviction, drunk driver, and illegal. And the Immigration and Customs Enforcement was managed to intercede in that to detain him. Well, following that, Friday, May third, I met with the Community Development Staff and Fish and Wildlife environmentalists in determining the brush pack, gut-back in areas, and the limbing of trees in environmentally sensitive areas. This particular issue involves the property next to the Walmart, which has been a haven for people to hide into despite the new trespassing signs. So, we have permission from Fish and Wildlife Services to limb up, which is about six, seven feet, and give the area a good haircut, and expose the area, which we think will address the blight problem. And on that subject of blight, last Saturday, I was delighted to report, am delighted to report, a second stage of a pretty big cleanup on a vacated property located at four eighty-one Cummings, and that has been essentially abated, and volunteers removed six point two tons of rat-infested filth at zero cost to the county. Also followed up with City Manager Eric Ware in requesting the DI Island, that's the one right at the north crest and the portal to Crescent City, and one oh one be cleaned up and cut back in preparation for our summer visitors who drive by this area. And I'm happy to report the city manager and his staff, the city, have taken care of that problem expediently. I met with Troy Ralston, the Talawidini Nation, and we discussed some blight issues, which involve the tribe. I asked if Take a Bite Out of Blight volunteers could be assisting in abating these areas, and he was very gracious and said yes. So, we're going to be moving forward in doing some work on the Talawidini Nation and helping them rid some of their blighted areas. Finally, our Community Development Department and DA Mixx and Sheriff Apperson and I met again with senior management at Walmart, and it announced it's going to prosecute aggressively all shoplifters. Sheriff Apperson has pledged his support in arresting and booking suspects, and District Attorney Mixx promised to prosecute for this misdemeanor crime. And the old law, before Prop forty-seven, a second offense of shoplifting was considered a felony. That's not the new world we live in today, but I'm very happy and pleased to report that both Sheriff Apperson and DA Mixx are on the same page, and we'll be meeting with there. Now, there's an end-around goal here, is that those who are convicted of these so-called petty crimes will face the court and hopefully face some kind of adjudication where there's a fine, and then that fine would be translated into community service hours, which is an area that I wish to hope to expand with our probation department, so we can get folks who commit these so-called small crimes and help them clean up our community. Also, there's a kind of a silly rumor abounding that Walmart is closing its doors in Crescent City. It's absolutely false. It has curtailed its hours after the midnight hour to early morning hours, and this is in an effort to abate some of the pilferage and shoplifting problems that I've just heretofore mentioned. They are in need of additional employees, especially in security. So, if you're seeking work, then head on down to Walmart, they're hiring. Fill out an application, and indeed, you'll join a great team there. That's my report.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry about that. As was mentioned by the other supervisors, we did go down to the CSAC Ledge Conference. I found this one to be very interesting, the last Ledge Conference. I went to outgoing Governor Brown's speech to us was that there are no solutions and we're all going to die. So, that's the outgoing, and now we have Governor Newsom coming in, and everything's uplifting, and we're looking for solutions, and everything looks good, and we'll certainly hope that that happens. As was mentioned, we always try to take the opportunity to go over to the Capitol and meet with senators and Assembly Members. And Supervisor Howard and I met with Senator McGuire's staff, talking about county issues. He also mentioned about meeting with Stafford Lair from Fish and Wildlife, so I won't go into that. And we did have a sit-down with Paul Snyder from Federal Highways. As part of that CSAC Ledge Conference Coastal Counties meets, I'm a co-chair of the Coastal Counties. Most of the discussion was over sea level rise. We did have some short discussions about cleanup within the coastal zone in environmentally sensitive areas. And also had a meeting with the League of Cities. There's going to be a joint workshop coming up with the League of Cities, as well as the Coastal Counties group, are going to meet with the Coastal Commission. That's going to happen on July the twelfth. I've got a conflict in my schedule, so Supervisor Cowan said she would sit in for me, so I appreciate that. Had a Whale Entanglement Conference call, had a North Coast Resource Partnership Meeting in Wyrika, where we approved two funding projects in Delnor County. The Smith River Community Services District got three hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars, and our CSA one got eight-hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars. So, those are all good things for Delnor County. As Supervisor Howard mentioned, had a meeting with staff on resource issues. Our Rural Counties meeting this year was in Inyo County. We always have one meeting a year in the county of the chair, and this year, it was in Inyo County, which is Death Valley. So, we went down to Death Valley, which is hard to get there from here, but it was doable. The interesting, I think one of the interesting things that went on there was Imperial County was the victim of a ransomware scheme where they wanted one million dollars in ransom. Fortunately, well, fortunately or unfortunately, whichever, Inyo, I mean, Imperial County did have insurance, but they were three and a half weeks without computer systems, and they had a two-million-dollar policy, and they're just about, I think they were just around that one-million-dollar figure of getting all their information back in and getting their stuff up and running. So, very expensive proposition to get into that, so hopefully our IT staff is well aware of things that are going on with that. As was mentioned, again, we had more meetings with staff on access points in Delnor County Pacific Shores. Went to services for Steve Wakefield, former chief of the Fire Protection District and City of Crescent City Fire Department. Not much I can say about that other than he'll be sorely missed, and he touched a lot of lives. What a great tribute to that man. Had a local Transportation Commission mentioned, or Delnor Local Transportation Commission was mentioned by Supervisor Howard, where we oppose SB one fifty-two. We also amended our website services contract, had a fifth amendment to our two thousand and eighteen, nineteen overall work plan, and adopted the two thousand and nineteen, twenty overall work program. And with that, on a couple of other notes, May is Military Appreciation Month. Please take a moment to thank a veteran or service member. And was also mentioned, attended Dancing with the Stars, as well as Lip, I think it's Dancing with the Stars and Lip Sync. We had some great county talent, as well as my daughter was involved, and she did very well. So, what a great event, and Happy Mother's Day to all. And that's my report.
Thank you. I also went down to Sacramento and attended the CSAC Ledge Days. As mentioned, we always take the opportunity, went in Sacramento, to meet with as many people as we can. Supervisor Howard listed off the different senators' offices. Supervisor Howard listed off the different senators' offices that we invaded, as well as we had a meeting with Liz Snow from Assemblyman Wood's office and we were over in McGuire's office as well. Following morning, we met with Paul Schneider for Federal Highways. We always try to meet with Paul. He's been a great advocate for Last Chance Grade and, you know, it's just good conversations, making sure that we have those relationships that are so, so important with projects like these. After that, I got lucky enough to go down to Santa Barbara for two days to spend with my daughter, get her ready to graduate from UC Santa Barbara next month. Came back, had a meeting with Heidi Keim regarding the Japanese delegation that's coming in in the fall. The program's going to be around women empowerment and just talking about who we're going to get and all the wonderful women in our community who are going to be part of that. Had a meeting with Tamara Layton and Delfine from Daily Bread Ministries discussing what's going on with there. We had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. I also attended the Celebration of Life for Chief Wakefield. Had another meeting with Daphne, this time with Heather Snow, talking about what services we can bring to Daily Bread. Hopefully that'll go forward. Had a gender review. Had another, our second, short-term solutions for homeless, homelessness that we've been working with, with the nonprofits in the community. And I see a couple of you guys in here. Thank you for coming. The nonprofits have been great at the meeting and everybody coming together. And then was able to go this weekend to the NCS Regionals down in Santa Rosa and watch my son, as well as Supervisor Howard's son, compete. It was a great weekend. And then was able to spend two, or two days with my kids for Mother's Day. So that doesn't always happen. Didn't get all of them together, but I got two out of the three, which was a positive. Next weekend, or this upcoming weekend, is Chico State's graduation. We have a lot of kids from this community graduating this weekend. So good luck to all of you guys. You know, we've got a lot of great kids that come out of Delmar County and to see them go on and succeed is really encouraging. So I'm looking forward to this weekend to watch my daughter graduate along with a lot of her friends. And that's it for me. So at this time, I'm going to go into a public comment. It's a timed 10:25 period. Members of the public may address the Board of Matters that are within the jurisdiction of the Board. If you're addressing the Board regarding a matter that's listed on the agenda, you may be asked to wait. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Any public comment? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Brayden Hatch. I'm a constituent of Jerry Hemmingson, Jerry Hemmingson in District 4. And I'm here today as a concerned citizen to discuss the issues concerning the Delmar County Department of Agriculture. The department is currently facing a situation of being understaffed, having only two animal control officers for a county of 27,000-plus residents with a large and time-consuming geography to add. There is also the issue of having no full-time kennel technicians to keep up on the maintenance of the grounds, animals, and kennels, as well as the issue concerning the need for a second full-time secretary to manage the increasing paperwork that our secretary is doing a fantastic job at. There's also the need for a full-time networking coordinator to maintain and reach out to residents of this community and to other shelters, rescues, and humane societies for possible canine and livestock placements. Another issue concerning the staff and volunteers is the, that of the safety and maintenance of structures. For instance, the donation garage that we, that they have has a serious case of rot and infestation, as well as the structure itself is partially collapsing. Maintenance of kennels is also a concern in terms of resources and efficiency because of the inadequate, inadequate supply of building and repair materials that is accessible to employees, as well as the inefficiency in terms of repairing kennels. These are just some of the fundamental issues facing the Department of Agriculture. This is not to say that there has been no progress made, staff and volunteers thanked the Board of Supervisors, in the progress concerning the deconstruction of the condemned buildings. That was a huge step in the right direction. But there's still changes that need to be made. The staff and volunteers, as well as myself, always to extend an invitation to each supervisor to come in and visit the Department of Agriculture and discuss these issues in further details and see if together we can create solutions to these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Avin Cooper, Delmar County. I talked to a group, two groups of homeless people. One group in Front Street Park there and another group just yesterday, right near the old ShopSmart. And I, I've wanted to know if we, as a community, if they had available to them a place to go that had 24-hour restrooms and maybe we could have available some little area of overhang in the worst of weather, but some very minimal things that would make their lives better, you know? Would they, would they move there, I mean, rather than sitting where they are now? And they said absolutely, you know, close to where they could walk to stores and services. It is not a solution to have, you know, just to let this, just let them be. They're not happy there. They would like to move. And our scenic resources and our insensitive habitat resources are being impacted. It's not a solution to cut down and trim out these sensitive habitat areas. I don't want to see our, our natural beauty and wonder and these, these city areas of willows and trees harbor, harbor the, the birds and the wildlife and many migrating animals and residents that are considered, you know, precious. And so if we just do the very minimum, I mean, we don't have to take very responsibility, but if we just let them know, we had, there is this place, you know, that has restrooms and that is safe, that nobody is going to chase you out of. Just give them that little assurance. They will move there and it will be better for them and it will be better for this community. I, I just can't stand seeing us go on without doing the bare minimum to make their lives better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, my name's Loreenya Makito. I wanted to piggyback on what Brayden said because I'm one of the volunteers. The volunteers put in over 100 hours a week because of the staff shortage, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Lupe Gutierrez and I believe I'm in Mr. Hemmingson's, one of his constituents. I didn't come here and expect to talk, so, but I was happy to hear of all of what each and every one of you do. I'm very impressed. I was like, wow, this is my first time. I've attended a Board of Supervisors meeting and I think I'll be in attendance more often. But I'm glad to hear about the CDC, CDCR, the shoplifting, the cleanup, the senior program, the homeless, the coastal cleanup. I mean, obviously, I'm hoping that you understand I was listening. But I have to say that I take personal issue the way the word immigration is used. I'm Mexican-American, I'm a citizen and well-educated, I might add. But the word immigration has a negative connotation when you couch it in the words with murderers and DUIs. I just would like to ask, as responsible people that we all are, that when that word immigration is used, to please reconsider how the word is couched. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Toni Jaeger. I live in Hayuchi. I've been a resident for about 22 years here. I would like to address the issue of the shortage in the Sheriff's Department due to lack of funds. Now, that's what I've been told. I brought a case to the Sheriff's Department approximately over a year and 10 months ago. And it has yet gone to the DA and it's very significant. I've been told by people who supposedly know that when people are brought in and they're trained, they then, in the Sheriff's Department, they then leave and go to the Police Department or another department because they get more pay. And then my case, when I ask about it, the person assigned to it says, I started on it, but another case was brought in that was significant. I have to stop and I have to deal with that one. And then it gets put off to the side because there are others that continue to come in. So if there's anything that can be done to raise the pay of the Sheriff's Department, I am willing to pay a sheriff's tax. I don't like to pay tax, but I am willing to pay for this so that our community is fully taken care of safely and that the people who are in charge in the Sheriff's, deputies that are sent out are not in jeopardy, nor is the public in jeopardy because there's a shortage, nor any case that is brought to the Sheriff's Department is delayed because there's inadequate people to take care of the case. So if there's anything I can do besides talk and anything that I am able to do, I am willing to do that and I'm willing to pay taxes to make sure that the Sheriff's Department is fully funded with a full crew at all times for all situations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we're going to go on to our next timed item. Veteran Service Office Update, Erin.
Good morning again. Good morning again. I'll wait for the slideshow to pop up.
Okay.
The intent of the meeting here today is to just show you what our annual performance is for the Veteran Service Office. The data comes in a little bit later, so this was the first opportunity I was able to present it to the Board to essentially demonstrate to us what we're doing within our community for our veterans. So I have some demographics and some basic office structure here. So you have me as the Veteran Service Officer. As you know, but maybe the community doesn't know, I work in a technical volunteer capacity, even though I work it within my duty description. I'm also the Director of Child Support Services. Because the qualifications as a Veteran Service Officer, you need to be accredited, which I am accredited, you also have to be a veteran. To fulfill these roles, one of the biggest things that I try to do is to be the, the voice and the face of the office, to be able to mitigate any issues, to also intervene as needed. Also within the office, we have our Veteran Services representative, that's occupied by Samantha Isdell, Sam Isdell. She is actually nationally accredited. She holds that accreditation because we're able to make her a power of attorney or a point of authority for multiple veterans organizations. This includes organizations like the Purple Heart, this includes the VFW, the, pretty much American Legion, most of the veterans organizations around the nation that accepts that national accreditation. She is in the office day to day, 40 hours a week. She's providing the down and out services when a veteran comes in to say, I need help with X. And she's able to find those needs because the VA is a vast array of different services. You have the healthcare side, you have the benefit side, which deals with monetary compensations. You also deal with the veteran cemetery side of it. So it's a very wide program that the VA provides nationally and even within our community. And I also have it labeled here, Office Technician. You saw it earlier today. We did recently fill that position. They handle the administrative portion of our office. Oh, excuse me. So talking about the demographics of our community, we have approximately 2,100 veterans in our small community. So a little bit higher than the national average, that's 7%. So we, we have a veteran population, a pool here. The demographics of those, majority of them are Vietnam-era veterans. So that gives you kind of an age scale, which means that you have a higher proclivity for things like Agent Orange exposure within our community. You have things that are dealing with PTSD issues because for me, as a combat veteran dealing with a return from a deployment, the American population as we have it today is very accepting, accepting and welcoming of the veteran community. Wasn't the same back in that era. So we have a higher mental health rate, we have the Agent Orange exposure, et cetera. So you talk about our average CMP. So some of this is technical jargon, but the CMP is a compensation and pension. It just means these are monetary awards offered to veterans because they are either, it's income-based. So the pension, the VA pension is very similar to SSI. So it's a supplemental income for someone that is a very low income or net asset individual within our community. And then the compensation side is they were hurt, injured, maimed of any kind while serving in the military. So average award for a veteran is $18,000 per year. And then cost effectiveness, that's always a big thing when talking about government programs so taxpayers understand how well we're performing. We're looking at for county funds because we are mainly supported through general funds. We also receive state subvention funding, so this is funding specifically for us to run the office. But if you look at the actual county fund, we're looking at a $12.35 return per dollar invested within the community. And what that means is, because it's the veteran receiving the money. These are community veterans. Yes, we have some that are from Brookings, but the mass majority are Delmar County residents. So we have, and you can see as I move forward, let's say a million dollars of income brought into our community. The idea and the notion is, where are they spending that money? That's small businesses, that's spent within the community, that's taxes, et cetera. So it's that cyclical nature of, of the money here. So we're bringing that into the community. So just a few graphs, just to be pretty, that utilization rate, so this is going the past five years of how much proportion or per the portion of the population are using our services. You could see here it's approximately 29%. So 29% of that 2,100 veterans are using our service. It's the sixth largest in the state for our utilization rate, so we're really high. But when we compare it to states like Texas and Florida, which have huge veteran populations, we're not even close. So that means that we still have room to grow. We're not to the point of diminishing returns. We're at a point where we still need to find more veterans and our main focal point is word of mouth. We give someone credible services and we give them results and they refer the friend, which refers the other friend. And sometimes it's working with people to put a claim in. Sometimes it takes four to five visits to actually submit the paperwork required because it is so lengthy. Moving on here, you could see the, the reduction here, and this is really important because we are seeing a decline of new benefits per year. So initially, when this office started, we get a floodgate of veterans coming in to seek services or the VA changes a policy. Agent Orange is the biggest one where they didn't acknowledge Agent Orange was an issue and now we see a floodgate. But now, as time goes on, this number's going to continually taper off because we're helping more and more, because it's new claims. Average new award, we kind of covered that. And, sorry, on the top you see 18 out of 58. That's our ranking statewide within our counties. So we're seeing an average new award here for the last fiscal year is $11,000. So for the new awards, not the ones that we had prior to, we're looking at rounding here $1,000 a month per, per person that comes in. So again, it's a very quick thing because I allow you the opportunity, if you have questions for me, is that we are very competitive, even though we're a small county here for this program and what we're doing within Veteran Services, we, we do well amongst our peers. Obviously, we're never going to be LA County with hundreds of thousands of veterans in our community. But what we do here is we try to provide a 100% confidential, very personal relationship with our veterans, not only for the people that come into our office seeking services, but our relationship with our veterans organizations, i.e. the VFW, the American Legion, Vietnam, et cetera. And then moved forward, talked about the claims and how they're growing, but the biggest thing is the money awards and how we're treating our veteran here is two-sided. We have veterans getting money. That's good for them. It's good for the individual because in most cases, there's people that need the money because they're not high wage earners or they're on a very limited fixed income. So it's good for the individual and it's improving their quality of life because for the VA- the VA, not only is it enrollment in the program, hey, we're going to give you a check because we either hurt you or because you're a wartime veteran that has a limited fixed income, but it's also because they are enrolled in VA healthcare. They have ancillary benefits. There's benefits, it's a wide array, which is why they require an accreditation, because we could talk about education benefits to disabled veterans. And what we do here locally is really try to provide what we can because geographically, we don't have a large VA facility really near us. We have a clinic in Brookings. We have a clinic in Eureka, and they refer to them as clinics or C-Box. But major hospitals, San Francisco and Roseburg, those are the largest nearest hospitals. And so, when you talk about an elderly population, we're talking about Vietnam-era earlier. So, transportation is really low, or the opportunities to get there. So, we do face some barriers, but what we can do, we do very well here. And that's my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Questions, Mr. Boyd?
Well, I want to thank you for that report. As a veteran myself, I've had a chance to talk with a number of other veterans, and they've had nothing but positive to say about our office here in Del Norte County and how you're handling the vets. So, I appreciate all of the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Yeah, Erin, I want to thank you for your efforts also and your investment in the community and the things that you do as volunteering as the Veteran Services Officer, as well as Child Support Services. You know, it just goes to show how involved you are in the community, and nothing speaks more to that than your performance over the weekend.
Thank you. Since you mentioned that performance, Supervisor, the biggest thing that really emphasizing is, since I'm the face and the voice, you know, the person sitting here, I really have to give credit to Samantha Isdell, the person that's there every day. I personally believe if we did not have her in that position with her tenacity, her professionalism, and her ability to communicate with people, the office wouldn't be nearly as successful as it is today. She has a lot of weight on her shoulders, and she does a great job.
Great. Anyway, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Always a great job, Erin, and your staff and your key employees. I want to commend you. There was a slide you had up there before about historical utilization rate. And I didn't quite understand that. It was, yeah, one more. Keep going back.
Sorry, I don't have my glasses on. There we go.
I wasn't quite sure what that means, what meant. But I was, immediately, what attracted my attention is the spike up in 2017, 2018. So, it's a flat line for these years, and now, suddenly, it's spiked up in you. That's six out of 58 counties. So, explain what's going on from 2017, 2018, and I presume through now, 2019, that this graph seems to be tilting up.
So, I mean, without running it through an advanced statistical algorithm, so I can only say kind of what my hypothesis here is, and I don't know if it's a coincidence because the second I leave, the utilization rate skyrockets. I don't know if that's part of it. But what I genuinely believe is that the VA's made significant program improvement changes because, I mean, let's be honest with ourselves, the VA does not have an incredible nationwide brand. It's known as overly bureaucratic, not very timely. So, they are perpetually changing. And during this period, they made very significant changes on how they submit claims, were able to submit them quicker, they're able to be assessed quicker. Whether or not it's successful, time will tell. But really, it's that we deal with a very small community of veterans here, and everybody knows everybody, everybody talks to everybody. And so, just that foundation of saying that we're really here to help, there's no judgment, it's you tell me what you want, and I will tell you the tools to get there, and I'll help you every step of the way. I mean, we changed the officer in this timeline where, hey, you know, I can meet you at the park. If you don't want to come into the Veterans Memorial Building, if you want to go somewhere else, I'll meet you there. Hey, you need, I mean, just anecdotally, there's times where it's like, hey, jump in our car, we're going to take you to Eureka right now. So, kind of having that built brand where we really do want to help, we do have that compassion, really plays into the increase in utilization because we are getting that community involvement.
So, I see, and again, the nexus, does this graph have anything to do with national input in the election 2016, Trump as President, him's getting involved at the upper levels of management of the Veterans Department? And local, where your outreach has suddenly galvanized, and now, you have more people that are being helped? Is that what I'm hearing and seeing, actually, from this spike up in 2017, 2018, is that there's more folks involved in solving veterans' problems?
You know, I wouldn't even know how to speculate that. I really, I wouldn't know if there's a correlation with the national side of it. I just know that during that period, there were significant program changes, which was encouraged by the new presidency. Whether or not that's a correlation causation, I really can't tell. Yeah, of course. And then, of course, I know our building superintendent's not here right now. I also wanted to give him very high compliments. Oh, there he is. I really want to say thank you, that all the work that they've done into that building in the course of the past four months has just, it's been amazing, all the paint, it's just really done a lot of work in there, and I've gotten a lot of compliments for the facility, so I wanted to also thank him on that.
As Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, the community spirit that you impart to all of us, more importantly, to the staff here in Del Norte County, makes us all very proud. But I do have to compliment you for the level of service that you not only provide to us as a department here in the county, but in addition, the level of service you provide to the United States of America is continuing your active reserve status.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Really appreciate that, Supervisor Howard.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're doing a great job. I got a question.
Oh, of course. Sorry about that.
Thanks for all you do, because you do a lot, and it is very noticeable, and you can see that in your numbers. Talk about homeless, because it was kind of alluded that we have a whole bunch of homeless veterans, which I know you've done an amazing job with that in the whole group, so if you want to talk a little bit about that.
Absolutely. What it was is, just a little bit of history. I know we know it for the most part. I started with Rural Human Services before with the county, and they started an initiative to talk about veterans homelessness. And we were talking about addressing that within our community. Long story short, eventually, started building into different programs from that group to help, to cope, to coat, just different units of this. So, I've definitely been part of these groups and how we're helping veterans and how we're helping our community. Since starting as a Veteran Service Officer, we did not have any HUD-VAS vouchers for our community, zero. They were allocated out of Curry and Coos County, even though they're the same operating units, part of that bureaucracy of the VA. So, with the team effort of not only with the VA, with the Housing Authority, with Veterans Services Office, we were able to allocate HUD-VAS vouchers into our community, which is similar to HUD, right? It's similar to a housing voucher, it's to get veterans into homes. The added part of that program is that it provides case management. So, it's not saying, here's your voucher, go find a place, have a good life. It's, here's your voucher, let me help you find the place. And once we get you in a place, hey, I'll see you in a couple of weeks. Do you need anything? Is everything going okay? So, they're trying to provide that wraparound services. I think it's a great program. And as we have it now, we do have vouchers still available within our community. So, all's what it takes because we always hear, hey, this guy's a homeless veteran. And so, we engage very quickly. I mean, there has been times where we say, get in the car, we're going to go to Eureka because they have a shelter there, and it depends on the needs of the person. And some people make the decision that they don't want to, that they're fine with their situations, and there's been cases, whether you call it a success or failure, it doesn't matter, it's just how it plays out, is that we house them, it's success. And then, they choose, they say, you know what, actually, this isn't the lifestyle one, and I'm going to continue my nomadic lifestyle, and that's fine. But we have the vouchers available. We have the mechanisms to get people into shelters if they're a qualifying veteran because, to be honest with you and the community, is that the VA has a definition of a veteran. And I do agree with that definition. I mean, it's very basic. It says, you served under honorable conditions. It says that you served your full time, and that you have a successful completion of your Terms of Service. If you don't meet that definition, you're not eligible for most services. And so, we have people that will claim veteran status, and maybe they were a prior service member, but due to circumstances, they no longer meet the definition. And to give relevance to that, if you hear the term "bad papers," and there's multiple conduct classes, I mean, it's the VA, so it's bureaucratic, so there's ways we could talk about this for hours, but ultimately, someone that has a dishonorable discharge is a felon. I mean, and they will say something, and so, it doesn't make them eligible for it. And there's some circumstances where it was done unjustly, and we work with them too because we do have a duty to assist. So, we have some services that we still provide to help them. But if they are a qualifying veteran, and they want to make the decision, they're willing to go to a place, I could get them into a house that night. But they have to be willing to do that part. So, there's a relationship that's built for it.
Well, thank you for all you do and for your service, and I wanted to point out, because I know you have been very diligent in helping homeless veterans, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Yeah, have a good day.
I'm going to go back to consent really quick. We've got some people in the audience. So, I'm going to go back to consent agenda. If there is any comments from the members of the public could be heard at this time regarding any items on the consent agenda, those are items one through seven. Any public comment on the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Okay.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. We have two proclamations on the consent agenda. Supervisor Hemmingson, you have one, and Supervisor Berkowitz, you have the other. Supervisor Hemmingson, you want to go first?
Sure. This is a proclamation proclaiming foster-parent appreciation during National Foster Care Month, May 2019. Whereas the family serves as the primary source of love, identity, self-esteem, and support, and it is the very foundation of our community and our county. And whereas, in Del Norte County, there are 84 children and youth in foster care who deserve the best opportunities that can be provided, as well as safe, secure, and stable home possessing the compassion and nurture of a resource family. Whereas, all children and youth in foster care need a positive, meaningful connection to a caring adult who becomes a supportive and lasting presence in their lives. And whereas, dedicated resource families help fulfill a vital role in providing guidance, stability, and love, which helps children and families heal and reconnect, resulting in the launch of young people into successful adulthood. And whereas, dedicated resource families frequently adopt foster children, resulting in a continuous greater need for more foster families. And whereas, there are counties, excuse me, there are countless individuals, public and private organizations, and often unsung heroes who work to increase public awareness of the needs of children in and leaving foster care. And whereas, as well as the enduring and valuable contribution of foster parents, kinship, adoptive homes, the foster care system is only as good as those who choose to be part of it. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim resource-parent appreciation during Foster Care Month in Del Norte County, and urge all citizens to join us in helping to change a lifetime of a child or youth in foster care by volunteering their talents and energies on behalf of children in foster care, foster parents, and the child welfare, and all other committed professional staff working with them this month throughout the year. Passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors this day, 14th of May, 2019.
Is there someone here to accept this? Do you want to say a couple words?
Thank you. My name is Kimberly Williams. Our resource parent was not able to make it today, so I am one of the social workers, and I will make sure that she gets it. Thank you very much for your recognition. We do appreciate all of our resource families in this area, as it is very needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Supervisor Berkowitz, could you read, please?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is a proclamation of Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2019. Whereas optimal mental health care is essential to the overall health of Del Norte County, resulting in productive activities, fulfilling relationships, and the ability to adapt to change and cope with adversity. And whereas, an estimated one in five American adults ages 18 and over are afflicted by mental illness, nearly 45,000 people in the United States, or one person every 12 minutes, die from suicide annually. And the county of Del Norte has made a commitment to mental health care in which all residents can receive high-quality, customer-centered services, and takes pride in its history of upholding the dignity and civil rights of all its people, including those coping with mental illness. And whereas, mental illness should not be shrouded in stigma and discrimination, causing those who are afflicted not to seek care, mental health problems do not discriminate. They affect people regardless of race, creed, age, lifestyle, and economic status. And mental health recovery is possible with proper treatment and support, empowering mental health consumers to lead full and productive lives. Whereas, the county of Del Norte observes Mental Health Month every May to raise awareness and understanding of mental health. And we commend the Department of Health and Human Services Behavioral Health Branch and all its community partner organizations, whether private, faith-based, or governmental, and individuals for their outstanding work improving the quality of life for mentally disabled individuals in our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the county of Del Norte that May 2019 is hereby proclaimed as Mental Health Awareness Month throughout Del Norte County, and calls upon its citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services to all people with mental illness. Passed and adopted this 14th day of May, 2019. And do we have somebody who would like to accept?
Can I speak?
Absolutely.
Hi, my name is Sam Behan. I'm on the service. Mental health is a blessing. It's been really helpful for me, and all the workers always have a smile on their face. I thank you guys for being part of the community. You do a good job. All right, you got the best, you guys.
Thank you.
My name is Nicholas Newton, and I've been a client with Del Norte Mental Health for about 18 years. I would like to thank the caring and concerned mental health staff who have helped me with my mental health issues over the years. They've helped me become a productive member of the community and society.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Leanne. I bring them every year. We're very proud of them this year. And being here gives them the opportunity to be seen just like everybody else. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our timed item 1045, Redwood Rising Update. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Great. Thank you for having me.
Well, thanks for coming.
I have some handouts coming around. So, thanks for the invitation to come and speak again about this exciting project being led by Redwood National and State Parks. Everyone has the handouts. I'm going to walk through a few of these slides, and then hopefully have some time for questions that you may have. Kind of, this is a status update. So, most of you are probably aware of the project Redwood Rising. And go into the second slide. And go into the second slide. The reason that we need this project is very clear, that Redwood National and State Parks, thirty percent of it is old growth redwood forests, and the remaining sixty percent, or eighty thousand acres, is second growth forest. As you can see from these pictures, you had a healthy forest at the top and an unhealthy forest at the bottom. Essentially, this project is trying to put techniques on the ground to move the second growth forest, accelerate the development into these old growth forests. If we waited for it to happen naturally, it'd take hundreds of years. We're trying to accelerate that for a variety of reasons that we'll go into. So what is Redwood Rising? Redwood Rising is a new partnership that's been developed between Redwood National and State Parks and also Save the Redwoods League. We've joined forces to try to look at the previous logged areas and some of that second growth forest we were just talking about, and trying to reconnect all the old growth patches that are within the congressionally designated Redwood National and State Parks. The benefit of this partnership is many. It really combines the strengths of all the different partners in the group, the state parks, the national parks, and also our nonprofit partner, State of Redwoods League, allowing us to work much faster and more efficiently, and also scale up work that we've done previously over the past few decades, learning the lessons of how to restore these second growth forests. So just by the numbers a little bit, we talked about the eighty thousand acres, that is our ultimate goal here, and about three hundred miles of failing and inaccessible logging roads that remain on the landscape within the park. We're looking at trying to remove those. I will focus today, and the focus of the documents I have here in front of me are the first five years of implementation, in terms of five thousand acres being thinned and forty-five miles of roads being removed. The cost of that, we estimate about thirty million dollars, of which, we've already raised thirteen million dollars of private and public funding for this. It's pretty exciting. So moving on to this page with the map, this is a overview. The map's a little small, but I think it's pretty clear. These are the two, the two areas in green are the project areas. We have what we call our north and south geographies. Up north is basically shorthand for Mill Creek watershed, and in the south, it's the second growth forest and the Prairie Creek watershed that we're looking at treating over the next few decades, but essentially focusing on the next five to ten years. Here's some of what we're planning on doing over the next decade. We're gonna treat up about twenty-five thousand acres of forest up here in Del Norte County, removing fifty miles of road. There's also a component of this to try to re, to put some wood back in the streams that was removed, to build some complexity back into the stream habitat for the fish. They like to have the pools and the ponds and slow down it, so it also slows down the water flow a little bit. There's also other components about removing conifer encroachment on the woodlands and also treating invasive species. Down south, we're looking at treating up eight to ten thousand acres, again, removing fifty miles of roads that aren't needed, and also installing these large wood jams in the creeks for the fish. So moving on, there's some, I'll move pretty quickly through these next few slides here. I just wanted to show you some pictures about what this actually looks like on the ground. Like I said, we're scaling up from work that's been done previously within Redwood National and State Parks, and we've learned a lot of lessons about how to do this efficiently and effectively with a light hand on the landscape. But as you can see here in this first one, it's not such a light hand. We're going out with backhoes, and we're digging out some of these failed stream crossings. You can imagine there was a road here with a failed culvert. They dig it back out, and then you can see in that third picture, all the way on the right, the stream being restored. The stream was always there, it's underneath all this sediment, it's just flowing under there. Now we can restore this. I have an endorsement, I think. Moving on to the next one, this is a little bit about what we mean by putting some of this large woody debris into the streams. It creates, again, the fish like to have different types of habitat in the streams. They like to have pools and riffles. They need to have different types of habitat. They need to hide, they need to feed. This is to try to create some of that. When folks went in and did the original harvesting across this landscape, they pulled out a lot of the old growth redwood that was sitting in the streams, because it was merchantable. Now we're putting some of that back in, that we would otherwise leave on the landscape. Moving on to the thinning part, which is the part we talk about the most, I just wanted to show some of the different techniques we're doing. As I mentioned, this is all, this isn't your traditional, what you would think of as what was done in the past in terms of logging techniques. Logging techniques, whether it's inside the park or not, have all developed a great deal in the last few decades to put a much lighter hand on the landscape, to really not compress the soils anymore, not build as many roads, all that's not productive for the forest, be it a park or a commercial forest. And so some of the techniques we'll be using is a lop and scatter, which is essentially just cutting down the trees and scattering the material in place. And that will be used in limited amounts, because one of our main goals is to actually try to free the forest floor of all the additional fuels and all that wood. And so that's why you'll see here, we have a felled buncher and cable yarding, that will remove a lot of the large dimensional lumber that's on the scene, all the big trees essentially, removing them from the landscape. We will then sell those trees, hopefully at local markets, and all that money will be then put right back into this project to continue to do more acres. So, the parks will not gain any additional funds, nobody will be taking any money out of this project. Any money raised through sale of merchantable lumber will go right back into this project. Here's a good picture on the next page of what, you can see the benefit. This is here down, down south, where we thinned out the before, and then you can see the after in terms of the thinning, and then five years later, you see the understory coming back. This has the advantage of providing more wildlife habitat, it also opens it up, but it also, we can, while we're doing this variable density thinning, we can re-select for redwood trees, because when they replanted the trees and aerial seeded a lot of this, the mix they used were dug firs, actually, a species that actually traditionally wasn't grown here, it's a species from up north in Oregon. So we're gonna try to return the dominance of the redwood to the redwood forests and redwood parks. And so, we can do that, because we're out there actually selecting which trees were, we're kinda saying, you're the winners, we're gonna take out all your competition, give you more light, give you more sun, they're gonna grow faster, we're gonna have bigger redwoods faster. That's how we accelerate into old growth characteristics faster. And you can kinda see an example of that. The next page has a canopy that opens up a little bit more, and that's the same thing. You can see moving from a very dense canopy to what you would see more in an old growth forest. Okay, now moving on to some of the more exciting parts of this. This project has a lot of broad public and private support, as can be seen by, as I mentioned earlier, the thirteen million dollars we've already raised, and we haven't even started the project yet. And so, we estimate again, twenty-five to thirty million dollars. The variability there is because we are making some, again, where there is gonna be some revenue generated as we pull merchantable lumber off the landscape. But State of Redwoods League has already raised nine million dollars for this project. California State Parks has got a budget line in at one point nine million in last year's budget, and the National Park Service has agreed to two point one five million this year, and has essentially agreed to another two point eight next year, and in continuing years. The Centennial Match is something that a partner brings the money, and then the Park Service will match that money. It's a very special fund source, so if we did not have the partnership, the Park Service will not be bringing this two point one five million to the local area to do this work. There's additional fund sources that we'll be targeting in the future. Again, all this money's bringing local jobs, local work, right here into the community from the outside, which is very exciting. This next one's just a schedule of our, basically our compliance schedule. I was here, we were here earlier for internal scoping, now we're back, and you'll see highlighted, we're in the public review stage. Documents I have right here, in case you have any really hard questions. And so we'll be closing that out soon, and moving to a Fonzie is finding a no significant impact, that's our anticipation, unless something comes up. And then we'll be moving through some of the permitting, but you'll see implementation as early as this fall, unless something happens. And that's a pretty fast track, given we're talking about about thirty-five thousand acres of treatment in this compliance document. That's a lot of, that's a landscape broad. It's a new way to approach how to do compliance as well. We're doing a lot of innovation in this project. We appreciate all the support we've gotten from everyone here. So I just wanted to finish up with a few, I just liked some of these pictures of some of the work that we've done on Halter Ridge, down on, in the, off the bald hills there. You can see one of the cable yarders there, some of the restoration crews doing some of the, some of the big work with that. And again, just to emphasize that those crews are done, that brings people here, that brings jobs, it brings, all those folks need to eat at restaurants. So there's, there's all these side benefits as well from this project beyond all the ecological benefits we're talking about. So with that, you have a letter that we were thinking about. I appreciate if you would consider supporting this project with a formal letter that we would include in our public document and be on the record, so.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions? Any comments? Go ahead.
Steve, I'm sorry, is it, do you recognize me?
Sure.
Okay, Steve, thanks for a great report.
Thank you.
Tell me about this marketable product you're talking about, the second growth. Is this a biomass project? Is this a future biomass project? And what kind of revenue do you think you can generate from clearing out these roads? What kind of product is there?
Yeah, so the revenue will be generated from removal of merchantable lumber from the landscape. And so that varies greatly by the cost of, so we have, that's why there's such wide brackets in terms of the actual cost of this product. And so it really depends on timber pricing and the cost. But all the folks, we've had some meetings where we brought out folks who do this work in the West, and they, and they've come to both, both geographies, and they've looked at the landscape, and we have several folks that feel that they can do this work and make, make a profit essentially, and return that to the project. And so it's, it's essentially selling second growth timber. And so most of it will be, again, will be targeting the non-redwood species. Occasionally, we will remove redwoods as well, but for the most part, it'll be removing dug fir and other species that really weren't part of the mix here back when these were harvested, you know, the last fifty years or so.
Supervisor?
Yes, thank you, Steve, for accepting my invitation. I think that, I'm not sure that the public is aware of everything that's going on out there, and that's why I asked you.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Asked you to come. You know, some of us who have sat on the Mill Creek Advisory Committee, or, you know, know the progress of what's been happening out there and the direction it's going. This, this Redwoods Rising thing is, is a great deal, and I'm hopeful that the board will be very supportive of sending the letter.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Sure. Yeah, reflecting back on what Supervisor Hemmingson is saying, yeah, it's, it's great to see the progress that we've seen, in particular with Mill Creek. I have obviously mixed feelings about that over the year. It was my stomping ground for seven years of my life in the early nineties. Got some very mixed feelings about seeing that business go away, and more importantly, under the circumstances it went away. But in the end, the transition took place, we're living with it now. And projects that do accelerate the old growth characteristics of that Mill Creek watershed are gonna be extremely important. There's a variety of ways that you've outlined today in your presentation that that'll take place. The health of those forests was critical to the economy of this county for such a long period of time, and it did generate a lot of jobs and a lot of income. My hope is that someday that forest, again, will generate a lot of jobs and a lot of income, whether it's through this project, this very long-term project to restore those old growth characteristics of that watershed, or if it's through the interim sale of those timbers to try to make some revenues back for those that are doing the logging operations. We're gonna change the species dynamics within that forest. There's no question in my mind. Right now, it has a very diverse mosaic of species across the landscape, because you've got various ages of timber stands there, from young to old. Once those old growth characteristics are achieved, the diversity of species across the landscape will be reduced dramatically. But then you'll have those old growth successional species that are dominated in those stands probably take a good solid foothold, but it's gonna change the look of that watershed completely. It's the natural course of things, but more importantly, I wanna emphasize a point that you brought out. The piece specific to fire on the southern edge of our community there in Crescent City is extremely important. Getting that fuel load reduced from a lot of that decay, whether it's bear kill or something else that's created standing fuel loads, is great. It's a great effort, and especially in this day and age, when we're very much threatened by fire in our community from lack of management of these forests. So, I do hope we're very supportive of this as a board moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much for coming out.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Does anybody from the public have questions that they wanna ask?
Hi, Eileen Cooper, Vice President, Friends of Del Norte. Our group did attend the workshop, which the newspaper did a pretty good job of showcasing. But in case you did miss it, the whole plan is available on the internet, and you can see all the detailed pictures, maps, and objectives. It's really a very comprehensive and far-reaching plan, and we just look forward to it being implemented, and, and thank all of the, the two agencies and Save the Redwoods League. So, this is a major effort that we need to continue to support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, if I could just say one thing, we do have the ability to, you have the, you had this on a thumb drive or something, we can put it on our system, so the public would be able to see that also. The next time that we ask you to give a presentation, it would be nice that they would be able to see it. So I just thought I'd mention that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to item number eleven, discuss and take possible action on canceling the scheduled November twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen Board of Supervisors meeting due to the holidays.
Move to approved.
Motion and a second. Any public comment? Kylie, could you please pull the vote?
Could I ask a question about this?
Sure.
Yeah, before we take this vote. I looked at the schedule, and I think Thanksgiving is the Thursday, is that correct?
Yep, every year.
So what would be the necessity of canceling a Tuesday meeting? What would be the reason? Could someone explain that to me?
I think it's just been done in the past. I know that it's conflicted with CSAC general meeting, I'm not sure if we checked on that one.
I think that's in December.
Okay, I'm just saying, in the past, I'm not sure. This was brought, and it's here so that we can discuss it. So are you saying you do not agree with canceling a Thursday meeting?
Well, we do cancel a meeting in December, the second meeting in December is canceled. To my recollection, we've never canceled this meeting, the second Tuesday in November, to my recollection. Now, I don't think it conflicts with CSAC, so I'm wondering if the CSAC is not that week, and I think it is December, the following week, that CSAC is scheduled, I asked that question before. I'm wondering why we are canceling this meeting. It seems to be that we have an open day, and Thursday is Thanksgiving, and the following week is CSAC, so I don't see the, the point of canceling this important meeting. We have a lot of county business to discuss.
Anybody else have any comments? Supervisor Berkowitz?
Well, as far as my collection, recollection is concerned, I think we've always canceled this meeting. We've canceled that one meeting in November, and the one meeting in December.
You are correct.
And because it's centered around the holidays, and people take a long visit, a long holiday, I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't break precedent, basically, and not cancel this holiday.
It's also the week the schools are all out, so most families leave for that week. Supervisor Hemmingson, did you have any comments?
No, I was just gonna say the same thing. As long as I can remember, I think we've, maybe not every meeting, but almost always have canceled one meeting in November and one meeting in December. It's my recollection.
Supervisor Howard, you have any comments?
I have no further comments.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Kylie, do we have any general public comments on this item? Any concerns, questions? You wanna come up and say this, we can hear you on the record. We can kinda hear you, but on the tape, they can't hear you.
I just wanted to reinforce Berkowitz and Hemmingson's comment regarding the, and yourself, regarding the school holidays during that time, and I think a lot of people do go away, and those people who might wanna participate in listening to your board meeting, I think that they would be deprived of that if they're, they're not here. So, maybe we should, you should consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Kylie, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
No.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. Moving on to item twelve, review and take possible action on the draft budget for the Del Norte Solid Waste Management Authority for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, as requested by the Director of Solid Waste Management Authority. Ted, would you like to come up and talk to us about this, or do you have any comments?
Very briefly.
Very briefly. This is a formality required under our joint powers agreement. The Del Norte Solid Waste Management Authority is the joint powers of the city of Crescent City and the county of Del Norte, and we take care of all solid waste and recycling responsibilities. What you have before you is a balanced budget, not funded by any taxes. We have equal or lower rates than any other similar facilities in the region. Audits that are required are done by an external auditing firm, and they repeated recommendations that we raise our rates to address our ongoing liabilities associated with the Crescent City landfill and the cost of constructing the Del Norte County Transfer Station. Like I said, it is a balanced budget. And during the coming year, we will continue to investigate exactly and take steps towards developing a northern transfer station. But the costs of that are yet unknown. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from supervisors?
Ted, so our course of action is take no action?
That's a fine course of action. I understand that you only see us once a year, and you're not really in a position to scrutinize our budget in detail, and you rely on our board to do that. But I'd be happy to answer any general questions. And this is part of the partnership. So by taking no action, you're essentially deferring that responsibility to the authority board.
What concerns me, and I don't know if there is any, I'm not seeing any comments to the contrary, that you're not doing an excellent job. Are there any such documents? Have you received complaints that you'd care to share with the board?
I have not.
With regard to this past year, that it's not in our packet? Is there anything there we should know about in terms of what people are upset about? If there is anybody upset?
Well, I did actually have lunch with Jeremy Herbert of Recology just yesterday, and he's expressed concern that he thinks our rates at the Del Norte County Transfer Station should be higher because that would encourage more people to be collection customers.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Any public comment regarding this item? Okay. So we're going to move on? We don't have to take...
No action is required.
Right at this time. So we'll just move on. That was kind of... Everybody saw that. Going on to regular item number 13. Approve and adopt an ordinance repealing outdated sections of the county code and enacting rules and regulations for campgrounds and county parks as requested by county council and building maintenance.
Catch that double negative?
These are... This and the next item are ordinance that have been introduced, reading's been waived, and they're ready to go. But if you have questions, we are here.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the board on item 13?
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any public comment on item number 13? Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Kylie?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. Moving on to item number 14. Approve and adopt ordinance of the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors establishing fees for the Department of Health and Human Services in ordinance with Government Code Section 54985. As requested by the County Administrative Office.
This was previously introduced at the last meeting, and we've received no comments, official comments, at this point. But this is directly for the services provided by the Department of Health and Human Services and the fees that are attached to that.
Move to approve and adopt.
I got a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on item number 14? Seeing none, Kylie?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. Moving on to budget transfers. We have three. We have a proven adopt budget transfers 04-08, 05-02, and 05-03.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on our budget transfers? Seeing none. Kylie, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. Excellent. Moving on to consider miscellaneous legislative budget matters pertinent to the county of Del Norte. Authorize the chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal governments. Number 18 is to approve and authorize the chair to sign and send an updated comment letter to the State Fish and Game Commission regarding tag quotas for the northwestern hunting zone, as requested by the Natural Resources Goals Committee. Anybody want to talk about it? Chris?
We could talk about this briefly. As you're probably aware, we did pass as a board during our last board meeting comments to the California Fish and Game Commission and comments to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to move with alternative two, which was a 60-tag total increase that the department had analyzed in their draft environmental impact statement for the northwest hunt zone. In conversation with Stafford Laird in Sacramento, Supervisor Hemmingson and I both learned that that analysis that was done was not analyzed or publicly noticed in the ISO document, which is their initial statement, a reason for the increase in tag allocations. To not conflict with the department's recommendation in that ISO document, we felt it was prudent to bring this back before the board instead of potentially upsetting the entire elk season here in Del Norte County to see if the board would reconsider the allocation and go with the department's preferred alternative, which was to only increase by 20 tags for 2019.
Okay. Any public comment on item number 18? Good morning.
Good morning. Arlene Cooper, Del Norte County, Bob Berkowitz's district. I don't know. Did you receive two letters? One from me personally and one from the Friends of Del Norte. The idea of 20 more tags that is being proposed is actually quite an aggressive harvest. It is actually above what was evaluated as a proposed harvest when this document first had the environmental analysis. And so because the current conditions are already an increased harvest from only two years ago, I... It's very premature to know the long-term effects of what that increase is. I tracked the figures from 2013 to current, and the tags have gone up 20 every couple of years. So from 2013, from 2014, it was 40. Then a 40... I'm talking about overall harvest, which is what counts when you're looking at population health. So 40 to 60 to 80. And now what we're... They're asking is about 100 harvest, or 108 tags. So this proposal is actually a very aggressive harvest. And we only just increased it to 80, and now we're up to 108. I don't think that the constituents who care about the health of the herds are being heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on item number 18? Undertained a motion?
Madam Chair, if I just may follow up. The department's basically a point-in-time count projection are very, very conservative because they're just literally physically counting animals on a set route on a weekly and sometimes monthly basis to come up with their observations. And as this board has deliberated and discussed over the past several years, those counts have increased dramatically within Del Norte County, just within those herds that are in visible areas of this county. As you're aware, the county is close to 80% public land. But of those visible herds that are being observed by the Department of Fish and Wildlife, the majority exist on private lands in Del Norte County. The department, as Ms. Cooper has suggested, has done their best under their current environmental impact statement to allocate tags to areas where these increased numbers of elk, Roosevelt elk specifically, are becoming more prolific on these private lands. They've done this through the northwest hunt, and they've also done this through the SHARE program. They've capped out, under the current EIS. The supplemental EIS, which the board has submitted comment on, obviously increases that range of allocation to keep up with these growing numbers of Roosevelt elk that we're just literally observing within a small chunk of land, private land within the county. The assessment of elk in our coniferous forests is nearly impossible. But as we pointed out very clearly, and as noted by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife in a letter addressed to myself and shared with this board, the modeling is very outdated for the current carrying capacities and calf-to-calf survival within our county. In particular, here within our county, Carrington-Hilson, whose data will come out next year, that was unfortunately, the data could not be used. And this year's evaluation under the ISO is projecting at least Del Norte County captive survival rates in the 99 percentile. But for the northwest region in particular, it's over 80%. The model only considers 40% when making these judgments. So they're extremely conservative. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to go with the alternative proposed by the department.
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. Moving on to item number 19. Approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter of support to the grant proposal stewards to equal education resources by the Del Norte County Library for state funding under the Library and Services Technology Act for the 2019-20 year, as requested by the Del Norte County Library. Do you want to talk about that one?
Good morning. Good morning. So I'm here as a library trustee. My library persons that I work with and the library manager, we got together. And we did this for... It's considered basically for the homeless. And what we're doing is, there's really four or five parts to it. One of the parts allows for us to gather the resources that are available within the community and put it on our website and have a hand-print version of it that's available. Because what I see that keeps happening is those resources, it gets... It changes regularly. And who holds that information seems to change as well. So we thought that the library would be a really good place to keep it. That's one component of it. The other component of it is to have what we call a Lynda.com. I don't know if any of you are aware of what that website is about. But it has like 7,000 video... It's a video learning sort of situation where you can come in, and it's based on all sorts of subject areas that would help anybody to come in. But we're trying to get our homeless people to bring up their social economic status, and we're trying to give them a place where they can do this. We have several on a regular basis that come to the library, and so we're hoping to get more people in there to self-educate. We're also going to be hiring an architect that will help design a self-help resource center, which we will be able to purchase more additional self-help resource books, CDs, videos. So that's a third component of it. We're also trying to get our... We will be able to get activities involved, such as discussions from expert people to come in and talk about homeless issues. And here again, the whole idea was that I had seen, I believe, a resolution that both the county and the city had signed, I believe, last year, where they talked about how is it that we treat our homeless people here? And that it should be considered, they should be treated, such as any other member of our community, with respect and dignity. So the last component of it is that we're hiring this consultant who, by the name of Ryan Dowd, and he is also an attorney and has worked in a shelter for 32 years. Since the age of 13 years old, he's been a volunteer there. He's a really great speaker on empathy training. So I really want to encourage you with the passing of this... Hopefully, that we get this grant, that you will be able to attend our empathy training because I'm telling you, this man is dynamic. And we would have it open to our community. And I've connected with several people already in the community who have said we'd be happy to have somebody from our organization, our agency, come and partake in that training. School district will, at this point, be a partner with us, and they will be giving us the space where we can hold the workshop. And they'll also be connecting with the director of the fostering youth so that we can dispense information to them. So I'm hoping that you guys can support us and that if that empathy training goes through, it'd be great to see you attend that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to approve and authorize the chair to sign a letter of support for the grant proposal.
I got approval in a second. Any public comment? Kylie?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. Moving on to item 20. Approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter of support for AB 1710, which would confirm an existing memorandum of understanding between Elk Valley Rancheria and the county, and authorizing the tribe and the county to enter in future agreements regarding local authorization of cannabis-related activities on the tribe's reservation, as well as require the licensees to comply with California cannabis laws as requested by the Elk Valley Rancheria Council.
Move to approve and authorize.
Second.
Do we have any public comment on item number 20? Seeing none. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. Moving on to item 21. Approve and authorize the chair to sign a letter of support for Redwood Rising, a collaborative landscape scale restoration progress project between Save the Redwood League, the National Park Service, and California State Parks. As we just heard the presentation. This was requested by you. I don't know if you want to say anything more about it?
No, I don't think there's much more that needs to be said. It appears to be a great project for the forest. So I would move to approve and authorize the chair to sign a letter.
Great. I got a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on item number 21? Seeing none. Kylie, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. Item 22. Approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter opposing SB 284, which would increase the fee charged to counties to send youth to the Division of Juvenile Justice, as requested by the chief probation officer. Come on up. You want to talk about this, Lonnie?
Welcome.
Chief Raymond, Probation Department. So SB 284 would effectively raise the rate that the county is required to pay for, over five times, from $24,000 to $125,000 a year for any youth committed to the Department of Juvenile Justice by the county. Presents a host of problems for us, not the least of which is, we really can't afford that. And there's a whole lot of other dynamics that go into this as well.
Okay, any questions for Lonnie?
Yeah. Lonnie, would you agree this is basically an action by the state, a bill by the state to disincentivize sending award to the state? This is just a measure to prevent us from doing this? Is that the intent of this?
Yes. The intent of the author is to incentivize the county to keep... The intent of the author is to incentivize the county to keep youth local that are adjudicated as awards of the court and committed to any of these types of offenses. We would, there's not much we can do. The courts, which is a state agency, determines whether youth goes to DJJ or not as part of that adjudication process. The district attorney, the probation department, public defenders, other parties all have opinions, and we make recommendations to the court, but the juvenile court judge ultimately makes that decision.
I'll make that motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter opposing SB 284, which would increase the fee charged to counties to send youth to the Division of Juvenile Justice, DJJ, as requested by you, Chief probation officer Raymond.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment regarding item number 22? Seeing none. Kylie, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. Moving on to item 23, approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter opposing SB 144, unless sustainable funding is provided to backfill the loss of revenue resulting from eliminating county's ability to charge criminal justice-related fees and shifting a variety of costs from the offender to the counties, as again requested by the chief. Let's find this one.
So SB 144 essentially mirrors a bill that occurred two years ago, which got rid of all juvenile fines and fees. This does so in the adult realm. So all criminal fines and fees that are ordered by the court or charged by various agencies, including my own, would be eliminated. For my department, that's a cost of about $42,000 in revenue.
Wow. Any public comment on item number 23? Come on up.
Lynda Sutter, county. Yeah, 144, that is a big, big no-no. And eliminates charging people who are in contact with criminal justice system. This includes public defenders. We would pay for that. Mandatory drug testing, it eliminates costs related to persons incarceration and probation. I don't know who the nut was, I think it was Mitchell, that came up with this idea, but it's really a bad idea. This county would go seriously broke, and there would be no public defenders wanting to defend. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hi.
Madam Chair, I'd make that motion to approve the letter of opposition for SB 144 to, that letter of opposition.
Thank you. Second. I've got a motion in a second. Kylie?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could we make note on these two SBs that we also copy our senator to let him know our position on this?
Great. Got that, Kylie? Yeah. Thank you. Okay, and moving on to item 24, approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter opposing AB 901, which would authorize the Delnart County probation department to render service to those persons in the community who are on probation and subject to supervision under the jurisdiction of juvenile court systems as requested by the chief.
So this bill, and I'd point out, it says only authorize for those youth that are adjudicated awards of the court. What it does is it cuts probation out of any diversion services whatsoever. In particular, and on point for us, the truancy work that we've been doing with the school district for the last two years would be eliminated. I would not be able to do work with that population of youth. My officer wouldn't have a job doing truancy work, and the great work that we have done with the district in reducing chronic absenteeism and everything else would fall on other shoulders.
Any public comment on item 24? Mr. Thornton?
Chair Supervisors, Mike Thornton, Delnart County. I am asking you not to oppose this piece of legislation, and I'm reading that bill's summary now. It says the bill limits the authority of probation department to supervise and provide services to minors, to only circumstances where the minor is within the jurisdiction of the juvenile court. The bill also determines truancy, also eliminates truancy as a criminal offense, subject to the jurisdiction of the juvenile court. It goes on to say that this bill is designed to limit the contact that our youth are having with the criminal justice system, and I think that that's a good thing. We want our police and our criminal justice system to be engaged in stopping crime. And the purpose of this bill, as with SB 433, is to help prevent our youth from getting sucked into these systems, criminalized, and then put in the school-to-prison pipeline. There are other ways to deal with truancy problems, behavioral problems. There, as you'll see in SB 433, there's an effort to create pilot programs, diversion programs, that are going to be used to address these types of issues, rather than overly relying on criminal justice, courts, and police to deal with social problems in our communities and with our youth. That seems like a good idea to me. We don't need more kids pushed into these systems, put on a failure track, and then winding up as prisoners in Pelican Bay. Let's let our courts, our criminal justice, our probation, our police, deal with crime, not social problems, not child and adolescent behavior problems. Let's use other resources to do that. Please do not oppose these particular pieces of legislation, 901 and 433. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Oh, hi. How are you this morning, Dana?
I'm uncomfortable.
You're getting there, getting close.
Yes. Dana Gilport, in Roger Gitlin's area. And I'm here today to also request that you not opt out of both of these bills, item 24 and 25. In my line of work, I've witnessed a need for involvement from law enforcement with youth, which is always, always heartbreaking to have to see. And, in my opinion, so few of those cases actually require law enforcement in the, in the sense that we're discussing today. And when they should, when they do require that sort of thing, in my opinion, again, it should be more around creative or restorative justice sort of situations. And I'm not making any accusations here, but I'd like to urge you to keep in mind that there is such a thing as the school-to-prison pipeline. And because both school systems and mass incarceration systems do have the propensity to be for profit, not necessarily, but they can, I would hope that you'd agree that our youth and even our incarcerated adults are not chattel. And I feel like trying to opt out of these things would be encouraging such behaviors. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with the last two speakers. Taken jointly, 24 and 25, it does seem that the care of our youth should be guided by those who are involved with public health rather than law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to address any of this, Lonnie? I know that you do a lot of diversion programs over there, and that the truancy has been working very well, working with the school district. It's not so much starting in jail. It's more about programs that they're working with, so.
Well, and I don't disagree with a lot of what it said.
Yeah.
I mean, the whole point is to keep our kids healthy and in the community. I suppose the only reply I would, at least given this forum, is take a look at the numbers. Juvenile in custody populations, numbers of juveniles on probation over the last 12 to 15 years has decreased over 60 percent. And that's because of probation's work. We're not adding kids to the system. We're working to keep them out and get them out. That's just as important to us as our community partners. So, again, I won't disagree with a lot of what they've said, but I suppose I will take umbrage at the, at the implication that we're trying to add kids to the system, when very clearly the data and statistics don't support that.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I have some question. Lonnie, don't go away just yet. The supervisor Cowan did ask a question specific. You were just talking about statewide data. Talk about the success of the program in our Delnart County schools, our Delnart County Unified School District. What is the response? What is the request you're seeing from the school board or the Delnart County Department of Education? Do they want to see this program in place? What position are they taking? And then also expand on our own statistics, if you do have them.
So regarding the truancy, the school board and school administration is very supportive. We've worked over the last several years to put pieces into place where we could partner to try and address the truancy issues. My truancy officer's been working since October, I think, is when we finalized that position. And in that timeframe, since then to now, we've decreased chronic absenteeism over 50 percent in the school district. That's kids in school. Another point to make, I suppose, is those youth that we do work with on the truancy side cannot end up in the criminal system. It is possible that 601 petitions could be filed with the court, but the court, in my department, as an arm of that, we don't have the authority to incarcerate those youth. That's not something that can be done. It's not something that can be turned into a criminal act. And so our work in that respect is to get kids in school, to keep them out of the system, because the youth that we do work with on the criminal side, I can tell you, have horrendous, horrendous school attendance rates. Their family structures, family environments are not supportive of that. That's not a value that they have. And so our work in this, in this respect is not to see numbers increase at all, or even decrease in the short term. The investment that the probation department is making is a 15, and a 20 and a 25-year investment. The school district is going to see immediate returns on this. This benefits them. But for us as a county, this is a long-term effort to get kids in school and build a culture where school attendance is important, both for youth and families. Because the kids we're working with now, I'm looking at their kids in the school someday because we're, we're trying to instill that as a value now. Our own numbers, as far as in custody populations, we've probably dropped by 50 percent currently. Our numbers don't reflect that in juvenile hall, unfortunately, but overall, our average rates have dropped over 50 percent over the last 12 to 15 years. Our numbers of youth on probation have done the same. I wouldn't say that we're greatly ahead of the curve statewide, nor behind, but we're, again, an average is an average for a purpose and a reason, and we're riding those numbers just as many counties are. So we have approximately 40 to 50 youth on probation at any given time, and that's down dramatically over the historical data, historical numbers that have been.
Well, I guess in summary, at least from what you're seeing right now, your programs, as implemented with Delnart County Office of Education and Delnart Unified School District, have been effective.
Yes.
I know I've seen you personally in attendance at the school board meetings. I've had personal interaction with Superintendent Harris, who's been very complimentary of your interaction with the district, and specifically on items like this, specific truancy. Obviously, having a child in school versus not having a child in school is a great benefit to him personally, to his family, to our community long-term, as you've mentioned. Yeah, I wish there was another tool in the toolkit that could be utilized, but at this point in time, there's, there's, there's just not here in our community. I hate this. I mean, a lot of people feel this is a heavy-handed approach, but at the same time, we have to take urgent action when we do see what we did see in the past with truancy rates just creeping up annually to a point where it was out of control.
Well, and this is definitely a partnership. We aren't doing this alone.
Correct.
Nor only with the district. And this, this takes a community to come behind and make this happen.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
As far as I can look at this, the California legislative information, on April 10th, this was referred to the Committee on Appropriations, and then immediately went to this suspense file, which means, of course, this bill is dead for the year. So it really won't make any difference what we do. It's, it's not going to go anywhere.
That's not necessarily the case. The suspense file for the Appropriations Committee essentially is a, almost a consent. Bills go there and then wait for a vote in total. So it's not killed yet.
Well, that was in August, and nothing, or excuse me, in April, and no, no other action's been taken on this, which means the deadline for them to be out of committee and into the other house has already passed, which means this is dead.
My understand, the suspense file was to be taken up later this month or very early in June.
All I can tell you is what I see in front of me.
I'm Robert, Delnart County resident. I'm just curious, is the, the positive results you're seeing over the last decade or so, is that, is that in correlation with the rest of the state? In a gen, I mean, so in general, you know, efforts to keep people out of, out of the system? As far as truancy goes, I mean, there's a lot of things we could do. I probably should be more involved with the, the school district, but we have an open campus, you know, and, you know, it's, I'm sure there's dozens of, you know, students that are starting their, their adventure in, in skipping school, you know, every day, on little trails around the woods. But I think there is kind of a want for younger drivers to maybe be able to go get McDonald's or something like that at high school, and, and so we have a, a campus where, you know, where it's okay for them to wander off. So I mean, there's a start right there. But it did, it did alarm me too with number 25, or number 20, yeah, number 25. You know, just, it just seems like we're almost fighting the state's hand, one state fighting another state, really. As far as diversion opportunities, I just think that any chance we can, and from what I understand, any, any state law that we pass, you know, it's going to come with some financial assistance if it's cost us money. I mean, that, from what I understood, in these, these laws, which is mostly what we subside upon anyways, and I, I just, I can't, I, I think there's just a tremendous need for, for diversion opportunities, as you've said, you know, just, you know, kids that are living with heroin addicts and meth addicts is a real reality, you know? I mean, it's, it's really very prominent, you know? And so any chance a kid has to have another, you know, outlet to, you know, become emancipated or, or start on a different path, you know, I think, you know, I'm not sure what diversion programs we're talking about, but I'd like to see more diversion programs for at-risk youth up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from board?
I'll make that motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter opposing AB 901 with a copy to Assemblymember Wood.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kylie?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. Moving on to item number 25, approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter opposing SB 433, which would establish new offices of youth development and diversion under the State Department of Public Health as requested by the chief.
So very similar discussion. This is another avenue, essentially, that is meant to cut probation out, because the belief is that we're utilizing opportunities such as diversion, truancy, things such as that, to funnel kids into the system. So this bill essentially sets up a new county agency that is solely focused on youth diversion. This is a pilot program, so it's put out to eight counties, I think, written into the law. into the legislation, if I remember correctly. Um, but the intent is the same. Um, my understanding from discussions that I've, uh, heard of with the authors and other supporters is that the intent is to divert money away from probation, um, because they believe it can be used more effectively for diversion through another county agency.
Okay. Any public comment on item twenty-five?
Chair, supervisors, just to reiterate something that I said earlier, my understanding is that this bill proposes funding five counties to create pilot programs that indeed will be, um, held accountable to the State Department of Social Services and will move some of these diversionary efforts into public health as compared to criminal justice. Once again, I, that seems like a good idea to me, um, when we're talking about child and adolescent behaviors that are not necessarily criminal. Criminal justice should be for crimes. They want to try some programs to see if they'll work and if they'll work better. I just don't see what's wrong with that. Why would we, if, if, if they demonstrate that they are better after these pilot projects, then there's a decision to move in that direction because it's better for our kids. That makes sense. If they do the pilot programs and they don't work, you can always keep it where it is or try something else. So it's sort of like saying, whatever we do, don't try something new because somebody wants to perhaps move issues out of criminal justice into social services and public health that might be better served there. Why would we not want to try that? They're going to fund the programs. This may or may not be one of the counties that does it, and as I understand it from the legislation, it comes down to whether these things are reasonably available. If they're not available here or reasonably available, then they're not reasonably available. If they are, they are. But why don't we want to at least try to see what we can do better for our kids? If it works, great. If it doesn't, then we can stay with what we've got. Why cut that off before even trying? Thank you.
Thank you.
Last time I heard of a pilot program in the state, it was for condoms for the penitentiary inmates. And guess what? Now the whole dang state has condoms for the penitentiary inmates. So what I'm trying to say is, if this is already in a pilot program, has it already passed? The bill's already passed. I don't know what we can do.
No, it has not passed.
Well, think of condoms. Thank you.
So again, you know, I think our budget shows that, you know, we're, we're ill-prepared to, uh, to fund ourselves, you know? I, I think we're like at a hundred and twenty million and we raise about fifteen million locally. And so this program, I believe, you know, if we got any resources from it, would only add to our availability of our budget and grow our budget out a little bit more, which is resources that we need as, as poor people and we need to try, uh, different things for people. You know, we have a homeless program. These are people who were often raised, uh, without a support group. You know, I was a, a meth addict for a couple of years of my life and I was very lucky that I had a mother that just would not give up, you know? But, uh, but a lot of people don't have that resource. A lot of people's parents are dying of opiate addiction. They're dying of all kinds of reasons. They don't have parents. They don't have a support group. Uh, so, you know, these kinds of programs, I'm thinking, are very necessary in this area, you know? And I come from an area that had, uh, that was better demographically, you know, suited, you know, had better, better wages, uh, better livings. Uh, this area is chronically poor, you know? Uh, this just seems to me, you know, to put this on the agenda, it's, it's like a, a horse dying of thirst trying to eat sand, you know? We survive as a welfare county. We're not, not the people on welfare, the people who live here who rely on the roads, rely on the, the law enforcement, rely on everything, rely on subsidies from the state and federal government. And, and you know, maybe we should all start over, you know? Let's go institute a gold and silver standard and start everything all over, you know? Or, or we just have to keep going, I'm afraid. You know, we need more resources, uh, for, for, for troubled youth, for people that don't have resources at their home. So I, I, to be honest, I was, I was kind of, I, I didn't understand. I looked at the, the law. It looked like something that was built to help a community like ours, to be honest. And, you know, and I, I was, I'd be honest shocked that, that, you know, we're sending, you know? I think we waste a little bit too much time state fighting state and to, to the person who, who kind of just lives at the state's leisure, it just looks like someone's trying to fight for control of your leash, you know? But, uh, to me, we, we need more resources for at-risk youth and if this is going to help one iota, you know, we should, uh, we shouldn't be sending a letter against this, but thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
Yeah. Lonnie, can I have you come on up?
Um, Madam Chairman?
Yeah.
We should be aware that, uh, this is set for hearing day after tomorrow, so whatever we're going to do, we should do it quickly.
Uh, Lonnie, I have great confidence in your ability to assess, evaluate, and solve some of our problems. And we spoke at length on this yesterday, SB four thirty-three, and I have that confidence in you, that you know, and your opinion is highly valued by this particular supervisor. So I'm going to make the motion to authorize the chair to sign and send a letter of opposition of SB four thirty-three with copy due Senator McGuire, uh, which would establish, uh, the bill would have, has, would establish, and that letter should be sent forth with to the office, for the Office of Youth Development and Diversion, and keep it local. Solve our problems locally and you're doing a good job. That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion. Uh, I just want to say, you know, and my reason is not that I don't want to help the youth, and I think you do a great job with that, Lonnie, and I think we've got a great program in this community, um, where the community steps up. But anytime, anytime the state talks about establishing new offices, that usually means it costs more money. It means it's going to cost the county more money, even though you think the money's coming down from the state. Oftentimes, these new, new programs, we're expected to probably take the money out of, uh, out of probation department and put it into something else so that we can have these new offices and new people when the people that we're utilizing now appear to be doing a great job. Now, I'm not saying that, uh, pilot programs aren't a good thing and they should be looked at, but from what I've seen in most of these things, when they talk about establishing new offices, that's more bureaucracy, that's more overhead, that's more cost for small communities like ours, and, and that's why I would oppose it, not because, not because I don't think we need more help for the youth, um, uh, you know, as we probably do. Uh, and, and hopefully, uh, we're going to get those services, um, through, uh, through probation as we've done in the past and keep, continue to reduce, um, uh, those, uh, people going into the system.
Thank you. Um, and Lonnie, do you mind? Since that, I think some of the, the audience, Mr. Thornton, Mr. Ego made some good points here, and, uh, I want to go back to one of the comments made by, um, Mr. Thornton, specific to the pilot program for five counties with the legislation. Do they have those counties selected?
No, they don't typically choose pilot counties until legislation like this is passed and then there's a process.
Do, has appropriations looked at the cost of the legislation yet?
Not that I recall.
Um, because folks here have made some solid, strong points. Um, it's not a one-size-fits-all. We don't know what works, and as Supervisor Hemmingson has emphasized, um, the, if there's another creative mechanism to better address these needs, um, we should absolutely look at those. And I am very clear on what I've heard from folks in the audience, yeah, that, that needs to be a mechanism out there. We, we oftentimes stay in our box, right? And we oftentimes don't go out of that box to take a look at what other available resources are out there. But Supervisor Hemmingson's points are very strong in this case. Oftentimes, when the state passes these type of programs, it shuffles money out of one department to another and then probation, in this case, ends up suffering. So I guess that's my question to you. You've taken an opposition recommendation to the board at this time on this legislation.
Yes.
Is there fear from probation officers such as yourself across the state that this legislation will eventually impact your budget by shifting resources from probation to the County Department of Health and Union Services per se? Can you expand on that a little bit more before we take that vote so I, a little bit more educated?
Uh, my fear and belief borne out by a number of bills that you have before you is that there's a coordinated attack on probation because there is a mistaken belief that we are trying to shore up our, our own walls, that we are trying to utilize, uh, programs that touch kids that aren't on probation, diversion programs, to move kids from there into probation, criminalize. Um, and again, the statistics and the data historically and currently do not support that. Instead, what they show is that probation, both in Delnart County and statewide, is doing a phenomenal job in reducing the criminalization of our youth, of working with our youth, working with our community partners to find good resources and alternatives for kids that have positively affect them and their families so that they don't end up in the system. Um, I'm not trolling schools to find kids that I can eventually throw into prison. Unfortunately, that happens behind closed doors and homes more often than not. I see the kids and the grandkids of people that I've dealt with in years past now on probation, not because of the work that we have done, but because of the environment that they've grown up in, because of the choices that have been made. Um, our goal as an industry is to try and find solutions, um, to get those people out of the system. I tell people when they finish probation, "Hope to never see you again," with the intent that I don't want them walking through my doors. I don't want them sustaining that cycle that their family has been caught up in. I want to see them break that because that, that benefits them. It benefits me. It benefits my kids in school. When they can go to a school where families think that a kid getting an education is important and those kids that sit next to mine have that same value, that's going to benefit our community in twenty-five and fifty years. When we, when we raise up a, a population that believes that education is important, that had opportunities to get out of that cycle, um, it, it's frustrating for me because I think we're doing great work. And what this is, if not outright blatantly on its face, at least intentionally behind the scenes, is to undermine the work that probation has been done and not to, and not recognize, um, the results that we've shown. Uh, we know how to do this. We're not the only ones. We don't have all the answers. We have to have partnerships in the community. We cannot do it alone because we fill a, a, a role and a position. We don't cover the whole field. So, uh, that, as it may, don't say that we can't do our jobs and are doing it well. Don't cut us off at the knees when we're showing the results. Come alongside and work with us to get further down the road. That's what I'm asking for, and that's why I oppose bills like fourth thirty-three, because what it's doing is it's cutting us off at the knees without recognizing the work that we've done.
Well, that was extremely passionate and it just shows your devotion to the department, Lonnie. I, I think you've heard it from many people up here today. I don't know what's going on in other counties, but we, as a board, rely on our staff to bring us opinions on basically how this would affect us on the ground. Um, yeah, I, I don't know. It's a, it's a tough wrestling match. Obviously, I want you to have the most tools out there, but if your program's showing success, then we need to try to keep it as intact as possible.
I have a motion and a second. Any other public comment? Kylie?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. Move on to item number twenty-six, approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter opposing SB one fifty-two, which significantly changes the funding splits to California Active Transportation Program, ATP, created by the legislator, in a matter that even further limits our ability as a rural region to complete or compete for limited transportation funding as requested by Supervisor Howard.
Yeah, this, this came before the full Transportation Commission from Director Layton last week. Um, we had a chance to hear Director Layton deliberate on the issue specific facing rural, and I mean rural, communities like ours in going after, after active transportation program funds. Um, under SB one, the Active Transportation Program has quadrupled within the state of California. This allocation, as, uh, you'll probably hear, would direct close to sixty percent of those funds to just ten large non, uh, NPOs within the state, and those are large urban city centers. Uh, the remaining portion of the funds, which are very limited, um, would go to a competitive process, and then there'd just be a small rural allocation remaining for the rest of the state. To me, that is absolutely unfair and is emphasized in front of Supervisor Berkowitz and I by, um, Senator Ben Frazier last week. If this comes before his committee, he's going to put his foot down. Um, we'll see if it goes through the assembly or not at this time, if he keeps his word, but this is in front of us today. I know we do have Director Layton in the audience if she wishes to make comment, but I would move to send a letter opposing SB one fifty-two at this time and more specifically to our Senator McGuire, who's taking a letter of support, as, as we've been made aware.
Second.
Any public comment on item number twenty-six? Okay, Kylie, I have a motion and a second. Can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. Moving on to our last and final item, number twenty-seven, approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter opposing AB one three five six, which proposes a land use standard based on results of a statewide ballot measure that primarily, that's primary purpose was to sanction adult use of cannabis as requested by Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, this is a bill that really takes away local control, one-size-fits-all kind of a thing, uh, among other things ties this to the number of liquor licenses that are available in the county. Um, you know, we've been working on our ordinances, uh, to define where we want dispensaries and the like, and this kind of undermines that whole thing, um, again, taking away local control.
Great. Any public comment on item number twenty-seven?
Robert of the county, um, you know, it probably no impact to our county, but, uh, there's, you know, lots of little towns and, and counties that, that haven't allowed it yet, and, uh, there's a lot of work to get an ordinance going and, and, uh, for those people that, you know, reside in Roseville and Citrus Heights and Placer County in general and all, you know, they, uh, they're literally do a marginalized drive to get to where they can, you know, buy, uh, a consumer good, you know, that, you know, they've been effectively marginalized by their neighbors, you know, to say, "You can't get in our community." And, uh, and so I, I think it's, you know, it's, I, I don't really, you know, I, I don't, I don't know how, how I feel as a business person, you know? You, I'd have a conflict of interest really, but, but it, you know, as a, the just side of things. It took a lot of effort to get an ordinance in our county, you know? Um, we, we can't be going, I think, for like two hours during public comment the first, you know, the first time around in, in a couple of years now, you know? And so for a lot of communities, this might be their only shot at having, uh, access to what they voted for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Madam Chair, at this time, I'd, uh, move to send the letter of opposition for AB thirteen fifty-six.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. And I will adjourn this meeting and we'll see everybody at our next meeting on May twenty-eighth. Have a good couple of weeks. Have a good couple of weeks.